Be disciplined and help create order for your peers. That's what we're doing. Make informed decisions with the help of others. Seek advice if you are confused. And so, the affirmation for Themis is, "I perceive divine order with my inner eye. I trust that I am guided." So again, "I perceive divine order with my inner eye. I trust that I am guided." So with that, let's, uh... Let's breathe, everybody. So again, you guys are comfy, been breathing. So now, we're going to get into our conscious, connected breathing. We're going to start with, uh, medium breaths, in and out. Again, you can go through the nose or through the mouth. I would say, go with whichever feels more comfortable for you. Uh, remember this practice. You're going to gain the benefits from this by being consistent with it. So whichever is easier, whichever you can maintain for 45 minutes, I would say, go ahead and do. So let's get started. And we can start breathing in and out. In and out. Conscious, connected breathing, no holds. I'm gonna try to not breathe the whole time as well, because when I tested the audio before this, it was a little choppy and I don't want... I don't want to be distracting. I just want to be a guide for you guys, but I also trust that everyone's going to be breathing at their own pace. So keep breathing in and out. With every breath in, becoming more aware, becoming more present, more conscious. With every out breath, releasing what no longer serves you. Ideas, emotions, feelings, relationships. As always, just coming back to your breath, continuing to breathe in and out. Again, if in this first 20 minutes, your mind is racing, you've had a hard day, it's okay. Just observe your thoughts. We don't have to try to fight them, try to wrangle them like cats. Just let them run, just observe them. Breath work will meet you wherever you're at. There's no right or wrong way to do breath work. So just continuing to breathe and continuing to take your gaze inward, just observing your inner world. What am I thinking about? How am I feeling? Physically, mentally, emotionally, spiritually? "I perceive divine order with my inner eye. I trust that I am guided." Just like it said in the divination for this card. Right? We can learn from tradition. But you know, we don't have to be defined by our tradition. We don't have to feel... Like if our tradition is too rigid, it's making us feel stuck. You know, Themis is saying, "Okay, well, you know, not everything is gospel true," right? Take what works for you and leave behind what doesn't work for you. You know, in a lot of modern religion, Abrahamic religions, there's a lot of right and wrong, good versus bad. There's a lot of morality involved, shame and guilt. And I know we all, many of us grew up in religious households, so that conditioning runs really deep. So again, maybe using this time to just sidestep some of that, right? Obviously, there are rules to this reality. There are laws, uh, right? We have to breathe oxygen to live. We have to eat food, all of that. We can't just stop eating. We can't meditate ourselves into gurus floating above the clouds. No, we have very human lives and jobs and relationships and responsibilities. So again, maybe just using this session to become aware of these laws, these natural laws, but also maybe any conditioning that you might have from your childhood. Maybe looking at it with a new light, a new perspective as you continue to breathe in and out. With every inhale, relaxing a little bit deeper, opening yourself more to the divine, more to the magic, higher consciousness, unconditional love, whatever you want to call it, just opening yourself to a higher truth, a higher way of being for yourself. As we breathe, remembering, yeah, there are four souls here right now. Well, five, my girlfriend is also behind us breathing. And so, when we come together to do work or to, you know, even to do deeper ceremony work, you know, it is a ritual. And we're all coming in with our own lessons, our own challenges. But when we come into a shared space and we do breath work together, it does create a charged field between us all. So every person in this group, your individual healing is also enhancing the group's healing. And I think that ritual is important in life. I think ritual is something that's kind of been forgotten in modern life. You know, it's with everything on demand, social media, Netflix. We can kind of just distract ourselves all the time. And yet, when we come together to do spiritual practices, whether it's yoga, breath work, uh, deeper ceremony work, this actually does help us. It helps us reach a higher plane and increases our connection to our guides and are really our most authentic selves. So yes, it's a little bit of a sacrifice, but it's a sacrifice that helps us. The word "sacrifice" means giving something up intentionally in order to get something greater. So all of us are coming here in this session, giving up our time to do breath work, to heal, to release, to integrate and to grow. So just a reminder, as you continue to breathe and go deeper into your experience. Through the breath, we find strength. Through community, we find support. So in about 20 seconds, we're gonna go into some faster breaths. So keep going wherever you're at right now. Keep breathing. We're gonna go into some faster breaths to accelerate this process, to take us even deeper. Three, two, one. Okay, now we're going to up the pace, so more like this. So just upping the pace. If you can match that pace, great. If that's feeling a little too fast for you, that's okay. I'm only breathing to inspire you all, to guide you all, but trust your own body, trust your own instincts. But just keep going with a faster pace. We're gonna go for about three minutes, so continuing to breathe. Remember, with every breath, just surrendering to the experience. Again, the ego will fight in the beginning, the mind will race. But if you commit to this process, if you commit to conscious, connected breathing, eventually, we will push through that block and you will enter a deeper trance state. That's where magic happens, that's where the healing happens. So continuing to breathe with faster breaths. In, out, in, out, in, out. Welcome, Alex. We're doing some fast breaths right now. So hopefully, you're lying down, just joining about 12 minutes in. So just go into those faster breaths. For everyone else, we have about another minute here, so keep going. You all are doing great. I can't see you all, but I trust that you're doing wonderfully. In, out, in, out, in, out. Again, when we do these faster breaths, we can imagine that we're sidestepping those eternal laws set by Themis. We're flapping our wings, our Hermes sandals. We're sidestepping those laws of nature that hold us back or our own blocks, our own resistances. We breathe to transcend them. We breathe to transmute the darkness into the light. 20 more seconds, keep going. Using this time, if you've slowed down to double down on your efforts, to really commit here, keep going. 10 more seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Returning to your medium breath. Coming back to that medium breath that we started with. Now, just taking that energy we cultivated from those faster breaths, spreading it throughout your body, throughout your auric system. Again, if your mind is still racing or if you're having trouble dropping in, here's a visualization that can help. So as you're breathing in, you can imagine that you're breathing in a golden light. Again, this is that golden light. It's a higher frequency. It's divine love. It's a forgiving energy and all-loving and all-knowing energy. So just as you inhale with your eyes closed, just imagining you're surrounded by this golden light and you're breathing it in, you're using it, spreading it throughout your whole body, purifying your whole being. This golden light. Everything it touches, it transmutes. So on your out breath, you can also visualize that you're blowing out like a black smoke and you're breathing out all the junk, all the limiting beliefs you might have about yourself that "I'm not good enough, not enough, I'm unlovable," whatever lies that we tell ourselves. Just breathing them out with consciousness, with awareness. It's one of the central tenets of rebirthing, the holistic therapy of rebirthing. It's really about replacing our limiting beliefs with empowering beliefs. And these beliefs, we, you know, they come at a very young age. You know, really, when we're babies and we're young children. Our parents treat us a certain way. I mean, really, from the moment we're born and we leave the womb, which is so safe and we're happy and getting fed and then we're thrust through the birth canal. It's really stressful and then we come out screaming. There's a doctor who's some person we don't know and he grabs us. And pretty much from that point on, unconsciously, we, most people, create the belief that the world is unsafe, that the world is out to get us. So in rebirthing, we do this breath work. We're trying to go back to that moment, back to that moment of consciousness when we were so young and tell that little baby, "It's going to be okay. Everything's gonna be okay. You are loved more than you know and you're gonna do great things." So continuing to breathe, allowing, releasing, surrendering to the experience, whatever you're experiencing. So Themis also correlates with Libra in astrology, which is cardinal air. So the highest expression, the balanced expression of Libra is a strong aesthetic sense, cooperative, balanced and fair, diplomatic and seeking harmony. So I think that's also what we're trying to do here. We do conscious, connected breathing. We're seeking harmony within ourselves. You know, so again, if those voices are coming up for you, those limiting beliefs or your self-critic criticizing you, "Oh, this is dumb, this won't work," or whatever it might be saying, you know, don't fight it. How can we, how can we seek harmony with that part of ourselves, with our shadow? Can we make a peace offering? Be diplomatic with it? I read a reel yesterday on Facebook, Facebook, Instagram, talking about breath work. And because breath work, it really is an alchemical process. And you know, I think magic is real. We get told when we're kids, "Oh, it's just in the movies. It's just in books, it's not real." The real world is men in suits and numbers going up and down and big buildings. But we know that that's not true. And that if we are to do magic, then we have to use all of the elements. And we are made of all of the elements. Our bodies, our skin, flesh and bone, earth, blood. It's water, fire, right? Our bodies are at 97 degrees, 98 degrees. Bodies maintain a homeostasis. Our bodies generate heat. All life generates heat. Fire, air, right? Air is the vehicle through which breath work works, right? We are using the breath. We are overloading our body with oxygen, with life force energy to purify our whole being. And then finally, that fifth element of ether, the essence spirit, right? Because, I mean, even if we don't call it spirit, we can call it consciousness, right? Because we're not all robots. We're not just bodies eating and sleeping and doing things. There is a awareness, there is an intelligence behind that operates these bodies, all of us, right? We have different names and personalities, but beyond these bodies, we have a consciousness that is very unique. And I think that really is that, that fifth element, that spirit. But also, when we do breath work, we are opening ourselves up to messages from the divine, from our gods, our higher self. So continuing to breathe, continuing to activate all of the elements, using this time to become the magician of your own life, to change your destiny to a more positive outcome so that you can live a life of peace, of love and harmony as you continue to breathe in and out. Breathing into our truth, breathing into our power. "I perceive divine order with my inner eye. I trust that I am guided." Trusting that just by making the decision to come to this session today, that you are steering yourself to a brighter future and therefore humanity. I truly believe that when we heal ourselves, we heal the world. It starts with us. I know I often get the feeling like I want to save the world and, you know, it just comes from a deep desire to help others. But I know that by doing this group, by also doing breath work myself and maintaining my own personal practice, that that's where the real work happens. That's where the transformation happens. So Themis is just reminding us of the importance of coming together ritual. And again, also, the imbalance side of Libra would be somebody who is independent and indecisive, easily offended and too sensitive, someone who surrenders their own power to the common good. So as you continue to breathe and listen, perhaps maybe looking within yourself and maybe seeing that imbalanced Libra, that imbalanced Themis within yourself. When have I been too sensitive? When have I surrendered my power in order to please other people, to please a group? But again, as always, any of this comes up, anything from your past that's hard, just looking at it with compassion, forgiveness, the same way you would treat a small child. We can often be really harsh on ourselves. I know I used to be. But I think the more that we can develop compassion for ourselves and others, even people we dislike. My teacher always says that our enemies are our greatest teachers since they are just reflecting those parts of ourself that we can't stand. So of course, we get bothered by them out in the world. But again, trusting that anything that comes up in this session or any breath work session, it's not coming up to torment you. It's coming up to be looked at. It's coming up to be addressed. You can actually rest easy knowing that if something hard does come up, it's coming up for the last time. It's coming up because you're ready, because you have the strength and now you have a wonderful tool to help integrate process, become a better person. Continuing to breathe, medium breaths, in and out. Continuing to breathe in about, under a minute, we're gonna do another three minutes of faster breathing once again to accelerate this process and take us all a little bit deeper into our journeys. Again, just going back to that imbalance as Themis, especially that dependence. I just want to make it clear that by doing these sessions, that I never want anybody to become dependent on me. I'm only doing this as an offering so we can come together. It is my hope that in coming to these groups, that everybody will also learn how to do breath work. And you know, when your life gets hard, when you can't come to these sessions, that you can use the breath work as a tool so you don't get kind of sucked back down into the stress, into those hellish ways of being. So obviously, I can't breathe for you guys. You guys are doing all the work and I'm really proud of you. So let's now go into some faster breathing for a few minutes. So again, picking up the pace once more. In, out, in, out, in, out. Again, going at your own rhythm, picking up the pace, even if it's just a little bit faster than you were going before. Again, if it feels hard, good. It's called breath work, not breath fun. But the work is worth it. It will be worth it, I promise. So again, if you're struggling, just try to push yourself a little bit further, a little bit beyond your comfort zone. Not so much that you're so uncomfortable that you're feeling just really bad, but just try to push yourself a little bit harder. If you're at the gym, right? We don't want to put on too much weight on at once, but just a little bit more weight, five more pounds or 10 more pounds. Continuing to breathe, powering up. During these fast breaths, we are cultivating our strength, cultivating our discipline. I'm just here like Themis to create the order for the sessions where you all can breathe in a structured way, in a conscious, connected manner, for your highest healing, for your soul's evolution. Keep going, about 45 more seconds. Breathing in that golden light, divine energy, purifying your being, releasing stuck emotions, integrating both the shadow and the light. 10 more seconds, keep going, keep pushing. Five, four, three, two, one, back to your medium breaths. I am loved, I am capable of more than I know. I am enough exactly as I am. I release perfection. And I know many of us here are creatives, artists, writers. They always say, "An artist's work is never done." You know, whether we're working on a song or an essay and keep editing it and, "One more, one more draft, one more draft." Got to be perfect, got to be perfect. But, you know, it's, it might never be perfect. But we do reach a point in our creative process where we just have to say, you know, I've done, done a good job, I've done this a few times, it's time to release this artist to the world. It's good enough, on to the next thing. I think if we get stuck in perfectionism, it also paralyzes us. When we get stuck, we stop moving forward. Just continuing to breathe, I release perfectionism. I break free from mental paralysis. Every breath brings me closer to harmony and inner peace. I honor the divine order within and around me. I release the need to control. I stand stall, I stand tall in my integrity, even when nobody is watching. I trust the natural consequences of all things to unfold in their own time. Again, I know this too well, too often we want things, we want change, we want transformation and we want it now. We're all like a verruca salt from Willy Wonka. But right, we all know that good things in life take time, it's a process, just like breathwork. We don't, we don't just take one breath and are immediately healed, no. We breathe for 45 minutes and we come back. We breathe once or twice a week, we go deep. And maybe every day, we do five minutes of conscious, connected breathing, our 44 breaths. Because the world out there is crazy. It's, it's very disharmonious out there right now. So if we spend all of our time and attention focusing on it, we are going to start to feel the disharmony, the disharmony and the chaos. So it's important that we take time out of our day to do things that nourish us. Breathwork is great, so is yoga. But maybe we each have our own little creative practice, whatever that might be. Maybe it's just dancing, putting on really music that just really gets you grooving and dancing for five minutes, even if there's no one else there. Maybe it's drawing or painting, sketching, journaling. Whatever it is, I believe when we create more than we consume, we start to feel a lot more fulfilled in our lives. And we live in a world, obviously, that places great value on consumption. And there's nothing wrong with consumption, but like all things, Themis reminds us in a balanced way, in a fairer way. It's okay to watch an episode of your favorite show on Netflix, but you know, maybe, maybe we don't binge the whole show in one day. Maybe we go out and take a walk or call our parents if they're still around, check in on them, call our friends. Continuing to breathe, in and out. Perceiving that divine order with your inner eye. Trusting that you are guided, not only in this process by me, but that you are guided in your life. That the universe does have your back, it is conspiring with you and not against you. As above, so below, as within, so without. We start to replace limiting beliefs that we've carried for years. We start to replace those with positive beliefs, powering beliefs. We start to experience powerful shifts in our lives. My friend Alex, who is on this call, we have a saying, we say, "Change your password, change your life." But it's true. My girlfriend changed her password to, "I am rich," on Monday. And right after she did that, one of her voice clients immediately sent her a Venmo transfer with money from a past lesson. So I really do believe that words are spells, what we say matters, and especially what we tell ourselves. What we choose to believe matters. And we can choose to believe in heaven on earth, we can believe in humanity and have hope for the future. Or we can believe in hell on earth, there's no hope, that it's all going to shit. Which is, if you look at the world, it could be very easy to fall into that trap. But I do believe this planet is ascending and more people are waking up every day. And the more that the powers that be try to push and control. Right, Themis, Themis is not going to let this world fall out of balance, out of order, just like the solar system, the planet, everything, everything works with one another. And there is an order here, there is a balance. Continuing to breathe in and out, finding that harmony within yourself. Finding that balance, whatever you came into this session seeking, finding it. Giving it to yourself, surrendering, allowing yourself to receive. Because we are all worthy of peace, we are all worthy of love, compassion, friendship. I walk in alignment with what is right, not with what is easy. I am a vessel for divine truth. When I speak, it is with clarity, and when I act, it is with purpose. Now, as we reach the end of our practice, everyone, let's deepen our breaths now. So continue with a conscious, connected rhythm, with deeper breaths, very intentional, conscious, connected, aware. Deep breaths, in and out. Relaxing into the wholeness of your being. Relaxing into the truth of your infinite nature, beyond this body, beyond this mind, beyond this moment. Now, everybody, you can relax your breath. Breathing normally now, staying where you're at for a few minutes longer. Perhaps feeling a little more harmonious, a little more balanced. Maybe you're energized, maybe you're very sleepy now. Wherever you're at, just breathing normally. And so now, everyone, beginning to return. Wiggling your fingers, your toes, your arms and your legs. Retaking a good morning stretch, stretching those arms up over your head, stretching the back, twisting. And whenever you're ready, slowly opening your eyes. Coming back into the space, coming back into the room. More relaxed, rejuvenated, balanced.